J.
Okay.
J.
Hi, J.
Welcome, everybody, to the Warren Township High School School Board meeting. It's Tuesday, March 21st, 2023. The first thing on the agenda is a public hearing for the consideration of a renewal of the e-learning program. I'll go ahead with the motion. I move to enter into public hearing for the renewal of the e-learning program in lieu of the district's scheduled emergency days, or a school day was selected to be a polling place for an election.
Second.
Second by Anderson. Roll call.
Motion by Shults. Second by Anderson. Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Five yes, motion carries.
This public hearing is to receive comments on the renewal of the e-learning program in lieu of the district's scheduled emergency days, or a school district was selected to be a polling place for an election. Anyone who wishes to be heard will have an opportunity to present written or oral testimony. Dr. Weisman, would you like to explain the renewal process?
Yeah, I'm gonna cede the mic over to Chris here for us.
So every three years, we are required to resubmit our renew our e-learning plan for approval by the Regional Office of Education. Our initial one was done in March of 2020, along with so many others. So we are now required to get our update our re-e-learning plan, which this renewal will then take us for another three years. We are allowed to make adjustments to the e-learning plan as we go through this period. So our e-learning plan that we're renewing tonight looks very different from the one we submitted back in 2020, as we've learned so much about e-learning over the course of that time.
Baptism by fire.
That's exactly right. So it's not, this is, we are approving a renewal of our plan, and it's, we're asking the board to approve the plan in its current state. So this is exactly the same plan that we've had all year. We don't see at this point any substantive changes to the plan.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments or questions from the Board of Education?
No, sir.
Will the Board Secretary read into the record any written testimony concerning the renewal of the e-learning program in lieu of the district's scheduled emergency days, or a school was selected to be a polling place for an election?
We have not received any.
Is there any person or persons who would like to provide oral testimony or public comments concerning the renewal of the e-learning program in lieu of the district's scheduled emergency days, or a school was selected to be a polling place or an election? Not, may I have a motion to close the public hearing for the renewal?
Second.
I need a motion.
Oh, sorry. I move to close the public hearing for renewal of the e-learning program in lieu of the district's scheduled emergency days, or a school was selected to be a polling place for an election, and return to open session.
Second.
Martinez.
Second by Martinez. Roll call.
Motion by Drake, and second by Martinez. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
And Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Now we'll move into our normal meeting, if, like we start all meetings, if we could stand up and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for
for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First step on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda tonight? If not, I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second by Drake. Roll call?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Next up is a, time for a public comment. This is the time where if anybody would like to address the board, visitors are allowed up to three minutes to address the board. Please keep in mind, this is a chance to address the board, it's not meant to be a dialogue. We do have one person who signed up ahead of time, if they'd like to go ahead and approach the podium and speak to the board. You could please go ahead and introduce yourself, that'd be appreciated.
The first thing I learned about doing presentations is to start with a joke. That was it. My name's Mel Metz, just like Mel Gibson, only better looking. There's the second one. I'm a school bus driver. This is my eighth year driving for Warren. First, I'd like to salute the board members. I've served on a couple nonprofits myself, and you may get some gratitude, but you have a lot of responsibility, and you can't live off of gratitude. So, thank you for what you do, and thanks for this opportunity to speak with you. I'm here tonight with a couple of my cohorts to draw your attention to an issue that our school bus drivers have been unable to resolve through our chain of command. By the way, I have some copies of this, if, if I could have them distributed at some Thank you. The Student Parent Handbook says that bus drivers are responsible for the lives of all students on their buses. I and other drivers take that responsibility seriously, we have to. Safe transportation relies on an atmosphere of calm competence and compliance with certain rules that have been posted inside the buses for years. Serious behavioral violations may include smoking or vaping, standing while the bus is in motion, defacing the bus, littering inside and outside the vehicle, throwing water bottles or pencils at the driver. It happens. The district has given drivers two tools to address student behavior. Number one, authorization to assign seats. Seat assignments help get a student's attention, allow a driver to monitor behavior, and place the student in the best position to document behavior via the rear-facing camera, the one in the front of the bus. I don't think seat assignment is punishment. Writing discipline referrals is the second tool. They are forwarded to the deans. By the way, this is effective only when the driver receives prompt confirmation that the incident has been addressed with the student. I have one more tool at my disposal, my own behavior. I work to be courteous and respectful to every student, and ensure that my expectations are clearly communicated. But this year, I have been told that referrals have been piling up on desks and not addressed promptly. Inaction leads to more referrals, adding to the existing piles. Furthermore, we are now told that we may not assign seats, or quote, "Please keep any contact with this student to a minimum. You can certainly assign him a seat for a day or two, then please do not interact with him." When a student refused his temporary seat assignment, no further action was taken. Plus, the driver may no longer interact with the student? These developments put a driver in an untenable position. My sense is that school officials blame the lack of action on referrals to the fact that we use paper forms, while other departments have migrated to e-forms, and they aren't willing to deal with the paper forms. Apparently, they intend to flush the backlog of paper submissions and start from scratch. There has been no movement on the refusal to support seat assignments either. So I am requesting that these two tools, seat assignment and prompt handling of referrals, be restored immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time tonight. Would anybody else like to address the board tonight? Not, we'll move forward to the next agenda item. The next agenda item is the board discussion of any visitor's comments. I don't have anything I want to discuss right now, but I will be interested to read the documents that Mel handed out, so I appreciate you leaving us some information. Move forward to the next section, committee reports.
I don't believe we have any committee reports.
We'll go right into the superintendent's report.
Let's see, I do want to recognize, we've got two students here with us today. The board talked a little bit about that a handful of months ago, and we've slowly been progressing to this spot, so appreciate some of the desire to have that as part of your standing meetings here. So Jess is a junior here, and Kyle is a freshman, so hopefully we'll be able to hear from them throughout the day. If you have questions as items come up, please feel free to get some student input. Really, in addition to the written reports, I just wanted to do a quick review of our strategic planning process that Jess and Kyle have been helping lead as part of our steering committee. During the month of January, we focused a lot on what we called vision sessions. They helped us identify what areas we wanted to focus on improving. We had about 400 staff that participated in small group facilitated sessions. Kyle and Jess helped facilitate some of those sessions with adults. We also had about 400 students participate in small group sessions. Kyle and Jess helped with some of those, they were initially done on Wednesday mornings. Then there was some, I think, valid concern that we didn't have representative samples of students, and so we then asked teachers for volunteers, who were willing to voluntarily give up some class time, and I went and visited about 10 other classes and reached about 200 more students. We did feel like we were able to get a more representative sample of students through those classroom visits. A couple of the classes I went and visited, I had a translator there, working, that I was working through.
So this is making sure that we, the students that we actually used for the process represented the demographics of our student population?
I am more confident about that now than I was the first time. I think the first time, it was a good reflection that we didn't. We were relying on students that were interested in coming early in the morning on Wednesdays. Visiting the classrooms, the teachers definitely found classrooms that allowed us to, in the end, have a broader sample of students. During the month of February and the beginning of March, we focused on what we called strategy sessions, that helped us identify what actions we wanted to consider moving forward within the next five years. We initially created some lists with about 400 staff members, and then we put out a call to respond to students and asked them to rank some of the strategies that staff came up with. I think we passed around a sheet. You'll see that the full list that the staff helped us create, and then the rankings that students put on there. So students in each of the three categories that you have there ranked what they would consider the most important or most interesting, or the three most important for each strategy. So we had about 650 students respond to that, which is, I think, a great number, and a very well-representative number of our students. I am curious, in a few minutes, maybe we can talk a little bit about where the board would see some priorities on that list as well. This Wednesday, which is, I guess, tomorrow, we're having our final in-person session. The steering team will look at some information after that, but we have about 40 stakeholders coming together, we have eight students, about 15 staff members, I think seven or eight administrators, a handful of family members, a handful of community members that are participating in that, and they're gonna synthesize the work that was done, and help us narrow the scope to prioritize exactly the types of actions that we want to see in the short term and in the long term. I'm really excited about that work, and we're planning on coming back, that first board meeting in April, to show a draft of the strategic plan, and then we'll get some feedback from you, go back and make, polish it up, make sure it's looking the way you want it to look, so that the board can approve that at the second meeting in April, or at least we'll present it for approval the second meeting in April. So if you're willing to take a couple minutes and just maybe provide me with some feedback on the list that you have in front of you, this is, for those of you that are in the audience, these are the three, three of the four categories that staff put strategies around. There's a fourth category that's not here, that's continuous improvement. That's largely an internal process. So we've really focused the student feedback on these three student-facing types of services. There, we're organizing this around the Warren Way, resiliency, engagement, and respect, being respectful. So these are showing a shorter list than what the board has, and what's on the board agenda and board docs, but they're just showing the top five, really, votes for students. So, under academic excellence, almost half of our students identified courses that teach tangible real-life skills as some, as one of their top three. With diversity, equity, inclusion, that, over half of our students identified providing student agency and flexibility as a priority, and under social-emotional well-being, over half of our students identified increased student voice, and you can read through the rest of them, I won't read them all, but that's how that works. Students identified up to three priorities in each area. So I am curious if the board has any, or if our student representatives have any feedback on things that they saw on the list that they would want to prioritize and make sure that the group tomorrow knows is important to the board, in addition to what we have from students.
I've got a question, just before we start, that provides student agency? I don't know. What does that, what does the agency in that context mean?
Yeah, so part of what the staff did is they read some research articles before they put this list together. There's a handful of things that student agency could mean. For some people, it means the students would like some flexibility around lunchtime, for example. They would like the freedom to go out to lunch off-campus.
How does that fall within diversity and equity and inclusion?
I think it's a, I think it's a, so in some cases, agency meant, like, we feel like we should be respect as individuals to make decisions that you would let adults make. In some cases, the agency has to do with, hey, I have a learning style that might be different from the teacher, so I would like to be able to show my growth and my learning in a different way than the teacher's expecting me to show it. Or, in a lot of situations, I think when students are talking about their balance in life, they would like a little bit more recognition from us as adults that their life doesn't revolve around school, and they might have different priorities at home, or different things happening in their life, and so maybe they would like some flexibility around due dates or assignments, or some choices around when to turn things in. So there's a couple of different things that agency might mean. A lot of it, I think, comes in the diversity, equity, and inclusion. It comes down to learning some learning styles, but also, hey, see me as, I would like to be seen more as an adult, and have some choice in decisions that are made about me.
Got it.
What strikes me here is the real-life skills. It's in different forms all through this. Do we have, or have we ever had any kind of course that teaches a young person how to manage a checkbook, pay bills, work, find an apartment? Do we have anything like that?
Yes, we do.
What is it?
I don't know what the course is called specifically, but we do have some of those courses. This idea comes up often, the students talking just about, like, taxes, like, I'm scared of having to do taxes.
I'm not a school, what the heck do I do now?
Yeah, yeah.
This is actually a conversation we had last night, that's why we knew the answer right away. I think the only suggestion we heard last night, and this is a conversation, was a lot of students take it, like, sophomore year, and it'd be nice if you had to take it, had to take it, as a junior or senior, because real-life skills don't mean as much when you're 14, 15 years old, as it does when you're about to graduate, and all of a sudden, holy cow, I might have to get a credit card, I might have to get a job, I might have a checkbook. So just having it a little bit later in your high school experience would be a little more helpful.
I'm just curious, nobody knows what that's called? Modern-day living or anything?
I'm pretty sure it's personal finance, it's in the business department.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Glad to hear it.
So I would like to add that, kind of going along with, like, what you guys were talking about, like, having these resources for students to be able to kind of know more about, like, tangible life skills, that also is, like, really brought up within social-emotional well-being. I was like a facilitator for, like, most of those, I think I was diversity, diversity, equity, and inclusion ones. But I think advisory period, although it might be fifth, I feel like it was really emphasized within the teachers, because they would like to provide more resources, more opportunities for students to get to know these tangible life skills, or just even get to know more resources that our school does have, but maybe students don't know that we do have.
Could you give some more detail on what's meant by the advisory period? I think I know, I just want to make sure I do know what it is.
Well, like, I guess, in the way that, like, the stu-, even students and teachers think about advisory periods, I would assume it would be more like a time to be given resources, time to be given help, time to be like, yeah, like a homeroom.
Half, like, half, maybe half of your lunch period could be a resource thing. You go, you have a certain place you go, something like that.
That's what I assume, the high school I went to, it had a homeroom. I mean, that's how you started out every day, and it was the same group of students, and
All four years.
All four years. And my high school was bigger than Warren, and it really helped, because you got to know a group of people, and there was somebody that you could trust and ask questions to. So I'm a big fan of that concept. I'll go ahead and make a couple comments. The one, one comment I made before when we talked about this, this is under academic excellence, and it's kind of a number eight and nine combined, it's not on the board there, but alternative learning opportunities, or individualized student learning, you know? I said this before, people learn differently, and I think there should be more opportunities for our students to learn outside of the classroom, whether it's online, work experience, there's other ways to learn than the traditional classroom. And it'd be great if we could see more opportunities like that.
I would actually think that number one in diversity, equity, and inclusion would be more fit in academic excellence with eight and nine. I don't know, I'm just not convinced that it really falls within that category.
Yeah, part, I think that makes sense. Part of the inclusion conversation is with some of the research articles that they read, I had to do with learning styles and what's called universal design for learning. So diversity for this conversation included not only, like, maybe social and ethnic, maybe some demographical types of diversity, but also diversity in learning styles, diversity in disabilities. I think a lot of that comes down to recognizing people have different learning responsibilities. There is student agency and flexibility, I think, in all of them in some ways, but yeah, I see where you're coming from.
My other thought or comment that I have is under DEI. I would move up number eight higher, and that's recruit and retain diverse staff.
Yeah.
We have a very diverse high school, we do not have a diverse staff, and as well-meaning as they can be, I don't think a non-diverse group of people can truly relate to a diverse group of students. I know that doesn't change overnight, but I think we need to make it a higher priority.
Completely agree. And also, I would like to add that, looking at social and emotional well-being, I'm really surprised by seeing 15. I would, I would have thought that it would have been higher, just because the teachers were really, like, really, like, kind of, just like, yet again, like emphasizing those needs for, like, social, social-emotional learning, because they were, like, kind of, they were making complaints about needing to take their own, like, like, working days off to be able to have, like, that emotional time. Yeah. And they feel like, just because students, I think Illinois passed a law saying that students can have these, like, emotional days, or social, or emotional well-being days, that they feel like teachers should too. or social, or emotional well-being days, that they feel like teachers should too as well.
We all do.
Yeah.
I'm retired, but I'm still in favor.
I'd like to kick in favor of something the president said, when you strengthen your school connections and building classroom relationships, and I talked about this, I think, the last meeting. I'm looking at SE, social, number four, and diversity, number four, school connections.
Oh.
I, I define that as homeroom. And, and one of the, one of the concerns that was mentioned in the last meeting was the, the problem with students spending two years over there and then coming over here and starting all over again. I would suggest strongly that we consider a homeroom, a group that would stay together cohesive and develop relationships. I, I'm astounded to hear that we didn't have homerooms.
Favor that too. I mean, because if you think about a lot of the things you're talking about, they're not built into the normal curriculum, but if you had a spot where everybody was together, then you could weave some of these things into that time.
If you have twenty minutes as, as a group, every, every day, you have announcements, you have, hey, what's going on? You have interaction among each other, you get to know people. I mean, you know, even if it's alphabetical, I mean, I think everybody had this C in their language in my homeroom, you know, which I can still figure out who was in my homeroom. But I, I think that's very important, and I was very surprised we didn't have it, and I'd strongly suggest it. I know you've got how much, how many minutes in an hour in the day, but-
Not suggesting that at all, but the homeroom, where I went to high school at, the teachers actually, once a year, visited the student's house for the parents, usually for a meal or a cup of coffee or something. They actually went to the student's house once a year. It gave the, because a lot of parents don't participate in their kids' education for whatever reasons, so it brought the school to the children's house. And it also gave the teachers an eye-opening of what is the student's home life like. So not suggesting that, but I'm just saying, to me, that was an awesome experience in high school. Kind of scary at times, too.
What you're saying, so in the social emotional well-being, if we look at ten and eleven, engaging at-risk student families, small group proactive interventions, I would think that something similar to that would really help with ten and, well, not that they can really go to students' house nowadays, but if we prioritized ten and eleven a little bit more, I think that would be a great.
Great idea.
Another question, if I could. Where did bringing back discipline come from? Teachers, students, both, or what? What, what's that about?
The list, everything on the list originates with staff, and then the students ranked it.
What do you guys think of that?
Well, bringing back discipline, I'm also like a little confused on what that meant when I saw it on the, like, the question survey. So, yeah, I also have a question about bringing back discipline, like, in what ways does that mean?
My impression with staff is that there's, continues to be a struggle with Senate Bill 100 and things that student decisions, when students make poor decisions, maybe five or 10 years ago, they would have received a harsher discipline than we're able to provide now. So students are only suspended for a very small number of things in our efforts to align with Senate Bill 100, the state statute around appropriate discipline. And that's frustrating for many adults, continues to be frustrating for many of our adults.
But that is something you don't have to worry about because you don't have discipline problems. So if I could jump over to something different, the, the career exploration opportunities and work-study opportunities, to me, is, is something that is, is very important. And we do a very good job and have for many years of helping our college-bound students because that was what we've been trained to do. I think what we, the career exploration opportunities, I think, need to be expanded into, you know, immediate careers, careers you take on right after high school. And work through a process of de-stigmatizing that where it says, if you're going in a trade, doesn't mean that there's something wrong with you. And I think some people, some students, I believe, kind of feel that way. And I don't, and we want to make sure we can make that seem normal and good. And I was telling Danny earlier, I just, I saw a post in one of the community forums, this woman was looking for a career opportunity for her child. So she was reaching out to anybody in HVC or an electrician because he wanted to just shadow one of those guys for a day. Well, I mean, and she's just doing it randomly on, like, it wasn't in Facebook, I don't know which one it was, doesn't matter. But I think that's the type of thing that we, if we can figure out a way to get that just sitting there, if somebody wants to do that, they can just go do it. It's not like they have to go dig and find and, and so on. So I, I really think that's something that could help, you know. If you keep students interested, then they, they do better.
I would like to bring it back to like the question you had on like that idea that, or like our thoughts about like bringing back discipline. I genuinely don't think discipline would be the right, like, way to solve these things. I really think it ties back to what is going on in like the student's life, kind of like with number 10. I would assume these students like committing like-
Are you talking about the engaging at-risk student?
Yeah. I would assume like those students are the ones that would mostly need the discipline. So I think it's really about finding like where this like, kind of like attitude stems from, rather than like, oh, they need harsher discipline, rather, we need to like provide them with more resources. Maybe actually let them have like a time to actually sit down with like their counselors or even just like the social workers and have them identify how they can really get the student to feel better, be better, and just improve their school student persona overall.
In relation to what John was talking about, do we have any kind of a interaction mechanism with the community in terms of, if I want to go to an auto shop, I can do that, or if I want to go to a plumber, I can do that? Do we do any of that?
Right now, most of our career exploratory experiences happen with tech campus, and we kind of outsource a lot of that currently. So if they want to do that, most likely they're, we're assuming that they're enrolling in a tech campus auto program, and then tech camp, tech campus is helping them with that.
I bet if you go to Gurnee Rotary or Exchange Club or any number of people, and you're going to find a whole bunch of different professions in there, and they will all be willing to take a student for a day.
What about a senior who didn't start like a vocational program, junior year, but now they're a senior? They're like, you know what, college, I don't, my parents can't afford it, I can't go, whatever. They can't, like the counselor or the, there's not someone who could provide them with the list to say, hey, we can connect you with X, Y, Z if this is your interest.
Not in a systemic fashion, like you're talking about. Most of our counselors are ready for that type of conversation. We don't have systemic programming or supports for that student. I think that's the right question to be asking.
CLC, right?
Yeah, a counselor would definitely, if a student is comfortable talking to a counselor, our counselors would definitely walk them through that individualized process.
Well, Danny and I were talking about this earlier today, or just before the meeting, but he, he said that, you know, one thing you can do is the unions will come in, just like colleges come in, and they'll sit down and talk. So I think we need to work harder at having them here, just like you say, hey, this Tuesday, the Electricians Union is going to be here, you can come in and chat with them at lunch or whatever.
Join the apprentice program.
Yeah, and I think there's just, I mean, it's just a matter of, you know, freeing up the people to do the work. I mean, that's, obviously, we've had a shortness of staff for many years. So I think we, we have an opportunity now to, you know, to free up people, and I think we need to make sure to point them in the right direction.
The organized tours of the new CLC tech campus? I mean, I, we toured that one, it was open, and that's astounding.
That's not for our students, though.
Not for our students.
I mean, it's, it's more of an adult education.
I know, but I mean, I'm just thinking, high school kids that would be interested could go in there and, whoa, this is what this guy does, and this is what that guy does, and be exposed to some things that they'd never even thought of before. I mean, we went and it was astounding.
Yeah. This is very helpful. So I took notes, and tomorrow, when the planning team works, they'll see, when they look at the list of, from the vision sessions, we did a similar conversation a month ago. I highlighted at that point what the board prioritized in our conversation. From the vision sessions tomorrow, when the planning team sees the list that's in front of you, I'll have highlighted the points that I felt like I heard from you today. And then I also, Ms. Martinez will probably add, then I think you're, you've got some good insight around student agency and flexibility, probably also belongs with academic excellence. So I'll make that tweak tomorrow for the team, too. I think that's a good add. So thank you very much for spending a few minutes on this, I appreciate it. And that's all I have for my superintendent reports. Unless there are other questions.
This visual is really helpful. Thank you.
Moving along to the consent agenda, I'm going to go forward with a motion. I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented, which includes personal recommendations per Exhibit A, numbers 114 through 134 as posted, and athletics, activities, and volunteer personal recommendations per Exhibit B, numbers 56B through 59B as posted. The payment of bills dated March 21st, 2023, in the amount of $5,235,846.24. Regular meeting and executive session minutes of February 28th, 2020, 2023. A six-month review of closed session minutes, the destruction of certain verbatim recordings, the IHSA membership renewal for the 2023-24 school year, and a one-year contract extension with Visual Image Photography, Inc. for student and athletic photos.
Second.
Second by Drake. Roll call.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. On to discussion items.
Yeah, we just wanted to recognize again that the board does continue to talk about safety concerns slash improvement areas. We've been, we've done that a couple of times in closed session, we'll continue to discuss that with the school board. And we are expecting a final report from the safety consultant here in the coming month.
Good. Sounds great. Okay, moving on to action items. First one is a renewal of the district's e-learning program. Any further conversation? If not, I move to approve the resolution of the Board of Education of Warren Township High School District 121, Lake County, Illinois, adopting the renewal of the e-learning program in lieu of the district's scheduled emergency days or because a school was selected to be a polling place as presented. Second by Martinez. Roll call.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Next is an approval of class sizes for identified classes.
Yes, I don't know if the board's done this recently very often, but one of the, there is a board policy that requires me to bring courses to you if they fall below a certain recommended range. So those courses are listed below. Let's see, a handful of them are capstone courses, a handful of them are specialized courses. I would recommend this year that we definitely move forward. Students have chosen these courses. But I'd recommend that we go ahead and move forward with them for next year.
You're going to take a look at them for the following year and see if there's any consolidation or whatever?
Again, we can do that, yeah.
We also look at some of these classes and see, maybe we need to phase them out. I know we talked about this a year or two ago with German because so few students were taking German, and the, the German teacher retired. Maybe there's some other language classes or similar type classes that were, could do the same.
Is this the last year we're going to have German?
This is the last year that we're planning on having German currently.
So like the numbers at the end are how many students are enrolled?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, we stopped it, you know, we're just going forward. But what I'm saying is maybe there's other language classes that we should start a plan to do the same. If there's not the demand for it, let's acknowledge it and find an exit plan for it.
What's our normal class size, like 22, 25?
So we're shooting for somewhere between, we're shooting for somewhere between 18 and 30 usually, depending on the class. Some of them are higher, like a PE or a choir class, we're looking for somewhere more between 25 and 50. So anytime we're four out, or more outside of the range, I'm supposed to come to the board.
Anything else?
Nope.
If not, I move to approve the projected class sizes as presented for the 23-24 school year.
Second.
Second by Carlson. Roll call.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Five yes, motion carries.
Next up is an MOU for recruitment and retention.
So we've had an open school psychologist position for a year now, and recently, the board did approve two additional openings. The school psychologist labor market is extremely tight. We haven't been able to fill the one we have and are concerned about our ability to fill the next two. So the MOU is something we worked through with the union to just acknowledge the district's authority to provide recruitment bonus for certain hard-to-fill positions, a retention contract for current school psychologists, and also, let's see, recruitment bonus options for English language learner teachers who are, I think, a priority and we need. So really what we're doing here is we're trying to acknowledge, hey, we've promised some of these extra resources to the community. We've got some of the positions that are starting to post, we want to make sure we can fill them.
Question?
Yeah.
Indirectly related to this, there was an excellent article in the Herald the other day about a school district, I think, a high school district in Schaumburg, if I recall, I think it was Schaumburg, about grow your own. They have a farm system, for lack of a better term.
Yes.
Any thought on that, or?
Yeah, that is, that is often how school districts are recognizing they need to not only fill open positions, but also address their diversity, because the current job market does not have the candidate pool generally, and the, the market is not as diverse as the student bodies are. And in order for most schools to be able to compete, they have to look at some type of grow-your-own program. And so a career program, a career exploratory program in education is probably something we should be considering when we're looking alongside other trades.
They had students teaching classes.
Yeah.
I mean, that was cool.
Yep. Definitely, we will need to probably have some type of education pathway alongside an engineering pathway and a medical pathway, yeah.
Read.
Anything else? If not, I move to approve the memorandum of understanding for recruitment and retention efforts for certain hard-to-fill positions as presented.
Second.
Second by Anderson. Roll call.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
I abstain.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Four yes and one abstention, motion carries.
Okay, next up is the staffing plan.
So whenever we're considering adding a position, I bring a new staffing plan back to you. This is for next year, and it acknowledges what I believe is the board's desire to add family support specialists in the district office. This would help us specifically with Dr. Engle's department in reaching out and helping families, helping identify families that qualify for state services, as well as helping them go through the process of applying for state services and other local services that can support them. This helps the families, it also ensures continuity with our grant funding, and most likely will pay for itself many times over.
Win-win.
And I think the other, the, another benefit, which is you're going to make contact with these families earlier on and get to know them a little bit, and hopefully help the parents feel more comfortable coming into the, into the school, you know, environment, which they may not be. I think that's very, very good.
We are targeting a bilingual staff member for this because we feel like it's going to be a good outreach to families, current and future families. It's, it's currently being presented for next year's staffing plan, but if you would like us to get going on this, we could post that earlier and get started on some of that outreach right away.
For this school year?
For this school year.
My perspective, I'd be okay if we reached out sooner.
Yeah, anytime.
Absolutely.
I'm for that. Steve?
Anything else? If not, I move to approve the fiscal year 24 revised staffing plan as presented.
Second.
Second by Drake. Roll call.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Yes.
Five yes, motion carries.
Next up is a hot water heater.
Not necessarily the heater, it's the domestic hot water storage tank. It's a huge fiberglass, thousand gallon tank over at Oak Plain. Matching the same thousand gallons that's currently there, just a little bit...
When would this replacement take? Even though it says we need to close the school for three to five days?
If we had to close it down in an emergency versus if we could have this down in a weekend back in...
Okay, okay, curiosity.
What about spring break?
It would be too soon.
Anything else? If not, I move to approve the Oak Plain Campus Hot Water Storage Tank Replacement with ME block at a cost of $68,566.
Second.
Second by Drake, roll call.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Five yes, motion carries.
Next up is an approval of an FBLA leadership conference.
Um, let's see, I don't have anything specific to add other than, more than what's in the description there.
Okay.
That's this summer.
Motion.
I move to approve the Future Business Leaders of America trip to Atlanta, Georgia, from June 25, 23, to July 1, 2023.
Second.
Second by Carlson, roll call.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Five yes, motion carries.
Next up, first and final reading of policies.
Let's see, this is, we have the approval for facility use, we're increasing the Class Two hourly rates by $5, and the Class Three rates by $50 and $100, depending on if it's a weekday or a weekend. This is in an effort to try to just recognize that there's an annual increase in cost for us. We want to make sure that we're covering that cost, plus maybe any incidentals or, you know, wear and tear on the facilities. There's also some specifics around custodial maintenance staff, because oftentimes when people call, they don't recognize or don't know what the custodial maintenance or security staff costs are, even though we allocate those. And then the, the policy update really is aligning with previously approved rates. So right now, our nonprofits, we have, the board policy said one thing, but the board had approved rates, was in different language, so we're just aligning the policy to match the rates that you previously approved.
Questions? I move to approve the first and final reading of Board Policy 820, Community Use of School Facilities at D-121 and Facility Rental Fees Per Administrative Procedures, 820 AP as presented. Second by Martinez, roll call.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Five yes, motion carries.
Last item is approval of a three-year contract extension with waste management. Any conversation on this?
They're the only game in town, right?
I was just going to say, that would be my only comment.
Yeah.
Is there, is there anybody else in town?
No.
Is there anybody else in the county? Anybody else in the state?
You want to make, somebody make a motion, yeah.
I move to approve a three-year contract extension for non-hazardous waste and recycling services with waste management.
Second.
Second by Drake, roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Drake. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Five yes, motion carries.
I now move to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Second by Drake, roll call.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Oh, no, okay.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight.